Good morning, everyone. I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Taos County Board of County Commissioners on Tuesday, April 4th. It is 9:03 a.m. and we are ready to start moving through a fairly meaty agenda this morning. So, Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Vahill, present. Commissioner Romero. Commissioner Muscaranias.
Here.
Vice Chair Romero.
Present.
Chair Brash.
Present. Thank you. And Ms. Anisa Arambidi, would you please lead us in an inspirational devotion? Thank you for being willing to do this this morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. It's going to be short and sweet, like me. Okay. It's a quote from St. Francis of Assisi. Start by doing what's necessary, then do what's impossible, and then suddenly you're doing the impossible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was beautiful. And actually, we should all have remained standing. Vice Chair Romero, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Yo juro felicidad a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y la República que representa una nación bajo de Dios indiscible, con libertad y justicia para todos. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you would remain standing, Manager Harmio, would you lead us in the salute to the state of New Mexico?
Yes, ma'am. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico. The S E C, perfect friendships among United States of America.
Thank you, everyone, and good morning. This takes us to our item six on the agenda, which is approval of the agenda. Commissioners, any changes, questions, or move to approve? Move to approve? Thank you, Commissioner Vahill. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Romero. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Vahill.
Yes.
Commissioner Muscaranias.
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Chair Brash.
Yes. Thank you. Item seven, awards and recognitions. We have some years of service certificates and a proclamation this morning. So, Mr. Harmio, if you would please take the lead on this.
Come on up, Leo. This is Leo Martinez. He works in District Five. Leo's been with us five years, and Leo's a hard worker along with his supervisor Juan. For a lot of years, about three years, it was just the two of them working. Now they're fully staffed, and I want to thank Leo for his years of service. In recognition of five years of service to Taos County, presented to Leo Martinez from March 2018 to March 2023, Taos County Board of Commissioners, Bob Romero, District One, Miguel Romero, District Two, Darlene Vahill, District Three, Angel and Brash, District Four, Ronald Muscaranias, District Five, and Brent Harnamia, County Manager. Thank you, Leo, for everything that you do. And not only does he help in the public works or work for some public works, do you still do fire?
Yep.
He's a volunteer fire department member as well. There's times, a couple of years ago, there were a late night call, and then he had to go to work. And then another thing that Leo and Juan have both done is with Chomisal Transfer Station, they've gone to smash the trash and the roll-off bins. So, they do a lot more than he also volunteers with PACA and helps maintain the community center as well. So, Leo does a lot, and that's the stuff I know. I'm sure he does a lot more. Thank you, Leo.
Thank you.
Mr. Martinez, you were clearly a very valuable part of this team. Thank you for all of your service. We up here can tell you Rhodes is top of mind for everyone out there in the county, but to add into that, fire, community centers, transfer stations, we are grateful.
Thank you.
Yes, whoops. Madam Chair, I would only add, thank you for being part of our team, as our chair has stated very well, but thank you for being part of the team, for choosing to work for Taos County.
Leo's one of the only guys that gets up earlier than I do. So, when I'm up at four, he's up at three. So, thank you for that.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your work. And items seven B is a presentation of a proclamation and certificates to the Taos County Central Dispatch for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, which is next week, April 9th through the 15th, 2023. Mr. Harmio, would you please lead us through this also very important item?
Yes. They're pretty shorthanded. I imagine that's where Roberto is. We'll talk a little bit more about that a little bit later. But next week is National Public Safety Telecommuters Week, whereas 9/11 is nationally recognized as, 911 is nationally recognized as the number to call an emergency to receive immediate help from police, fire, emergency medical service, or other appropriate emergency response entities. And whereas an emergency occurs that prompt response of police officers, firefighters, paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, is dependent upon quality and accuracy of the information obtained from the citizens who telephone Taos County Central Dispatch, whereas the public safety dispatchers are the first and the most critical contact of our citizens and have with emergency services. And whereas the public safety dispatchers are all the single vital link for our officers, firefighters, by monitoring their activities, by radio, providing them with information and ensuring their safety. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, professionalism during their time on the job, now therefore be resolved that the Taos County Board of Commissioners, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of April 9th, April 9th through the 15th, 2023, as National Public Safety Telecommuters Week. Signed, Bob Romero, Miguel Romero, Darlene Vahill, Angel and Brash, Ronald Muscaranias, attested by our Taos County Clerk Valerie Montoya. So, we would like to recognize Telecommuters Week next week and the hard work that Roberto, Eliza, Nina have done. These three behind me have gone above and beyond over the last six months, if not longer. And everybody at that department has gone above and beyond, and I can't say enough about how much work they do and their dedication to their craft and that they do. And then, and then we do have some certificates, and I'm going to let Roberto talk in a few minutes. But I also want to give this first certificate in recognition of outstanding excellence presented to Taos County E-911 Director Roberta Zara-Gusa with great honor and appreciation for your commendable and dedicated service to Taos County and the Taos County constituents. Never forget the difference you make every day. You're greatly appreciated, Taos County Board of Commissioners, on April 4th, 2023. Thank you, Roberta.
While Brent is looking through these certificates, I just want to say on behalf of the Commission, thank you, guys. You are the first first responders that are often not seen, but as Brent mentioned, like an absolutely vital link, and we know it's been hard, and we owe you more than a pizza. So, thank you for keeping the system up and going and keeping our county and the people who live here as safe as you do. I don't think we can ever repay you for how hard you work. So, thank you so much.
And our next certificate is for Eliza Espinosa. Eliza is our communications supervisor. So, in recognition of outstanding excellence presented to Taos County E-911 Communications Supervisor, Eliza Espinosa with great honor and appreciation for your commendable and dedicated service to Taos County and Taos County constituents. Never forget the difference you make every day. We're greatly appreciated, Taos County Board of Commissioners, on this April 4th, 2023. Thank you. And then another vital team member is Nina. She's, I don't want to say a jack of all trades, because she is a master, so I don't like to use that phrase, but wherever she can help, she helps. And there's not a question of her helping, so I do want to thank you, Nina. In recognition of outstanding excellence presented to Taos County E-911's Warrens Clerk, Communication Specialist Juan Nina Abreu with great honor and appreciation for your commendable and dedicated service to Taos County and the Taos County constituents. Never forget that the difference you make every day, and you're greatly appreciated, Taos County Board of Commissioners, on April 4th, 2023. Thank you, Nina.
Thank you.
And we also, and we'll maybe work with Roberto, and as these next individuals are in shift, maybe a few of us can go over and whoever's available and help present it. We also want to recognize Brianna Gomez, Keegan Moran, Darian Trujillo, Bressa Martinez, and Leonard Ortiz, and Christopher Calhoun. And without these three individuals and these individuals, we wouldn't have a functioning central dispatch, and I can't thank them enough for everything they do. Everybody goes above and beyond at the county, but these individuals have really stepped forward. With that, I do want Roberto to make some comments.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Roberto Zara-Gusa, E-911 Director. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and recognize my staff. They are an amazing group of individuals who play a vital role in public safety. So, thank you. Two months ago, two months into my directorship, I stood before you, and I told you that I could stand here all day and tell you stories and examples of how amazing they are and just brag. So, here I am today, and nothing's changed. I just have more stories and want to brag even more. So, I promise I'll be brief. For Telecommunicators Week, I think it's essential to kind of put the word out there of what we do and who we are, and it's essential to kind of engage the community into how we can be better on both sides. So, I kind of just put a couple of need-to-know things that I wanted to get out there for the community. First, please only use the 911 emergency line for actual emergencies. We only have a certain amount of 911 trunks, and when they're used for non-emergency lines are real emergencies, go to other jurisdictions, and that delays response time. So, please only use those 911 emergency lines for actual emergencies. Number two, location, location, location. I know emergencies tensions are high, but if you're going to be clear about anything, be clear about your location, and we can get help on the way. Location's the most important part at that moment, so we can at least get help rolling. Number three, please just answer our questions. There's a reason for all of them. We have questions so that we can keep you safe as the caller, and we can keep the personnel, our first responders, going to the scene safe. So, please just bear with us and answer those questions. Number four, help is on the way. We're still going to have questions. Believe it or not, they're that good where you may be on the phone, and help is already on the way, you don't even realize that they've sent for help, and we're still asking questions, and I think it's delayed, but it's in actuality, help is on the way. You know, they're there, they have dispatched, and help is on the way, and there's still need more questions. Number five, be patient with us. If we don't hear you or understand you properly, we have anywhere from eight different radios that could go off at one time. We service about 18 different agencies who could get on that radio at one time, and we have six 911 lines that could all be going off at that same time. So, please be patient. Lastly, and importantly for me, please treat our dispatchers with the same respect and dignity that you would any other first responder. Make no mistake about it, these dispatchers are the first responders, and they're a critical component of the public safety field who's entrusted to protect and save lives. So, treat them as you would any other first responder. I kind of tried to come up with the best way to summarize what it is that dispatchers do. I could stand here and tell stories all day again and provide you examples. So, I kind of was looking around, and I found something that I think kind of summarizes it all. So, if you would bear with me, it's entitled, "Who Am I?" It says, "Who am I? Says, 'I'm the voice that calms the mother into breathing life back into her infant's body. I'm the invisible hand that holds and comforts the elderly man who woke up this morning to find his wife of 50 years had passed away during the night. I'm the friend who talks to the disgruntled teenager out of ending her own life. I sent help when you had your first automobile accident. I'm the one who tries to obtain information from callers to ensure that the scene is safe for those I dispatch emergencies for. I'm the psychologist who readily adapts my language and tone of voice to serve the needs of my callers with compassion and understanding. I am the ears that listen to the needs of all those I serve. I have heard the scream of faceless people I never will meet nor forget. I have cried at the atrocities of mankind and rejoice at the miracles of life. I was there, though unseen, by my comrades in the field during the most trying emergencies. I have tried to visualize the scene to coincide with the voices I've heard. I usually am not privy to outcome of a call, and so I wonder. I am the one who works weekends, strange shifts and holidays. Children do not say they want my job, but when they grow up, yet I am at this vocation by choice. Those I help do not call back to say thank you. Still, there is comfort in the challenge, integrity, and purpose of my employment. I am thankful to provide such a meaningful service. I am mother, father, sister, brother, son, or daughter. I'm here when you need me and still here when you don't. My office is never empty, and the work here is never done. I am always on call. The training is strenuous, demanding, and endless. No two days at work are ever the same. Essentially, we are Taos County Central Dispatch. So, in conclusion, I'll just say that these people behind me and the ones that aren't able to be here, you know, they're my well-oiled machine at Taos Dispatch. And I say that because well-oiled machine works through any environment, rain, sleet, snow, holiday, 3:00 a.m., 2:00 a.m., they're still powerfully chugging along, and they've continued to do that. It's a testament to their dedication to the community and compassion for the people in it. So, I thank them for that. I kind of also found this quick quote that I kind of feel that it's important because of the thankless job that we do, and I kind of want to put in the dispatch center, and says, "In case you haven't felt it today, you are appreciated. In case you wanted to quit today, don't. You are needed. In case you need to talk, but feel no one will listen, there are many who will. And in case you haven't heard it today, thank you." So, I thank my staff. I'm proud to be their director, and Taos County should be proud as well to have them. They're an amazing group. So, please, next week, if you have time, thank these dispatchers for their commitment to service, because again, make no mistake about it, what they do is serve, protect, and they're a critical component to the public safety team. Thank you.
Roberto, thank you for your powerful statements. And let's not wait till next week in honor and in thanks to you, to Nina and Eliza, and the entire team that is working hard over there. How about a standing ovation for our dispatch team? Commissioners, any additional comments for our dispatch team?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm going to say thank you for your service. I don't know how you do it, but thank you for choosing to do it. Because of you all, we get to sleep a little bit better, and the community has you all there when they need you. I know I've used those services. You've helped me when my dad had his heart attack, and without you, I don't know what we would have done. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Vahill.
Madam Chair, ladies, gentlemen, and the rest of you who weren't able to be with us, thank you, guys, for your service. I know it's a thankless job, but in a way, it's rewarding as well. And without you, guys, it's everybody here, and you, guys, know it. It's hard to respond and hard to get to people if we don't have a functioning group like you. And I know maybe conditions aren't ideal, or pay's not the best, but we're working on that stuff. Okay? So, we're working on it to move forward, and hopefully, we can make it happen. Thank you, guys, for what you do.
Thank you, Commissioner Muscaranias.
I echo those sentiments, and thank you for your service.
Thank you all. Thank you all, and we will help spread the word that you shared with us this morning. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You guys have a good day.
And this takes us to item eight on our agenda, which is public comments. For folks in the room, we'll ask you to stand up and then approach the podium. And then, if you are watching on YouTube and you would like to call in, then please wait until we're done with anyone in the room, and the number is 575-737-6310. So, we'll take our phone up here off Do Not Disturb as soon as we're done listening to anyone who might be in the room. Reminder, you have three minutes to share whatever is on your mind, and also friendly reminder, we cannot respond, engage, answer your questions due to our state law about the Open Meetings Act. If your topic's not on our agenda, it's not fair to those who might have wanted to show up and listen to it. So, we'll just listen respectfully and follow up as needed, or the staff will follow up as needed. So, is there anyone in the room who would like to take advantage of three minutes for public comment? Meanwhile, I will set the timer. Okay. Steve, come on up. State your name, where you live, and we'll start timing you at three minutes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Commissioners, my name is Steve Meyer. I live behind Via Escondido, but I'm here representing Renewable Taos, and we are a nonprofit organization here that supports renewable, clean energy, energy efficiency. I'm here to announce, oh, first of all, I want to introduce David Munoz and Jason Meyer, who are also members of Renewable Taos. On April 22nd, which is Earth Day, Saturday, we're having Earth Day Central at Baton Hall, which is an open forum for any organization within Taos County, or even further, to exhibit for free any message they want to have that's Earth Day-related. Some of those messages might be that they need volunteers, or that they have some interactive method of showing people how, you know, where they can save energy, et cetera. And so presently, we have the Forest Service, we have the Taos Land Trust, we have the Town of Taos, and a number of other people that have already booked, but we have room for anybody else if they would like to come in and do it. Now, that's for the exhibitors, but it's open all day for the public. So, the public will come through, and they will learn about energy conservation, energy efficiency, et cetera. It's free. It's free to the exhibitors, it's free to the public, and lunch is free. Thank you. April 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer, and thanks to Renewable Taos. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to say a few words this morning? Yes, come on up.
Hi, good morning. I'm here on behalf of, oh, my name's Natalie Bertanson. I live here in Taos. I'm here on behalf of Youth Heartline, which is a local child advocacy nonprofit. I grew up here in Taos, and it's been here the same amount as I have, and I've never heard of it before. So, our goal this year is kind of getting our name more out there in some of the programs that we offer to the community. One of our biggest programs is our CASA program, our Court Appointed Special Advocates. We also do a lot of community programming, social emotional learning within the Taos Middle Schools, and our Branches Program, which is an outdoor program for youth. And then we have just a few other family stability and housing programming, both here and in Raton and Clayton. I'm here in regards to April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, so we are hosting a few events throughout the community in order to help raise awareness around child abuse within our community, as well as to raise money in order for us to keep continuing doing our programming. So, this week at Lambert's of Taos, from the 3rd to the 9th, if you just go have a cocktail, have a meal, 5% of their proceeds will be going to Youth Heartline and our programming. On Friday, April 7th, at the Burger Stand at the Ale House, 10% of their proceeds will be going to Youth Heartline and our programming, so you can go and have a delicious burger. And an online event that we're hosting is a Show Your Blue event. That's Wednesday, April 12th. If you wear blue and post a photo and tag us on either Facebook or Instagram, @YHeartline, you can enter to win our online raffle. We'll have $100 worth of product from Taos Mountain Outfitters that they donated, a $50 gift card to Opposite Bookstore, $25 gift card to the Taos Cow, as well as a $20 gift card to Moxie Clothing. So, anybody can participate of any age, and that's just kind of a way to bring awareness and also to support some other local businesses here in town. We'll have a meet and greet at Bar of Vino on April 16th, if you want to learn more about our programming, what we do, to meet with our board, as well as some of our staff members. We'll have a success story on the Taos News on April 20th, so take a look at that. And lastly, a really exciting event, we'll be hosting a free movie at the TCA, open to anybody. There'll be free admissions and free snacks and food, so it's accessible to anybody. That will be at 3:00 p.m. The movie will start at 4:00. We'll also have activities for kids and their families if they come. You can find all this information on our website at youthheartline.org, or you can follow us on social media, @YHeartline. I think that's all. So, thank you.
Thank you, Natalie, and thank you, Youth Heartline. Exactly three minutes. Appreciate it. Thank you so much to our speakers so far. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment this morning in the room? Mr. Thilke. And after Mr. Thilke, we will move to the phone. Again, that number is 737-6310. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm Neil Thilke from Yanosan Juan. I'm a volunteer, one of the volunteers, at the Chomisal Transfer Station's reuse. And last commission meeting, you had an award for Tomah, who runs our transfer station, who wasn't here, and I'm wondering if it would be proper if he didn't show up, if it would be proper for me to deliver it to him.
Mr. Thilke, we'll have staff follow up for you. That's a generous offer, but we'll have staff follow up with you on that. But thank you for thinking about that, and thank you for being a volunteer at the reuse center.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone who would like to call in to 575-737-6310? The phone is off of Do Not Disturb, so if you call in, it'll ring right here. We'll give callers just a moment. We'll give, we'll give callers just a moment. We should come up with something to do during this moment or two when we're waiting for callers.
History lesson.
There you go.
History, a history minute with Commissioner Romero.
That's nice. We could also point out to the different organizations who have spoken today that we do have the Taos News in the room should you need their service. Thank you, Mr. Jeffrey Plant, for being here as always. Appreciate your, your attention to our, our work and the work of Taos County. Okay, so I believe we can call it that we have not had anyone call in. So I'm going to put the phone back on Do Not Disturb. And we will move on to item nine on the agenda. Commissioners, this is approval of the March 21, 2023 regular meeting minutes. What are your wishes?
Madam Chair, motion to approve.
Thank you, Vice Chair Romero. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascananos. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner V. Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascananos?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chairbrush?
Yes, thank you very much. The minutes are approved. And now we move on to item 10 on the agenda, Presentations. And item 10A is a presentation for Taos County Audit for Fiscal Year 2022. And do we have Mr. Bobby Cordova from Cordova CPAs? Good morning. Good to see you again.
Good to see you as well. Well, good morning, Commission. My name is Bobby Cordova. We have a presentation which is highly condensed. Okay, sounds good. Highly condensed from our exit conference that we had December 1st. There's a requirement in the state of New Mexico that the audit be presented in a public meeting, and we're fulfilling that requirement today. So I'm going to just cover a little bit on timeline, how things transpired. We're, of course, almost all the way through FY '23, you know, or three quarters past. So we're going to cover the timeline. So you're briefed on that. We're going to touch on some financial highlights. Again, a lot of detail for us during the exit conference, some of the communication that was presented in the audit, and then our opinion and the reporting. So the preliminary communications was in the summer of 2022. And our understanding was that there was a significant turnover. We're kind of delayed, so there was a relatively late beginning to the audit. We had an entrance conference in late October. We weren't sure if the audit was going to be finished by the regulatory due date of December 1st. But the decision was made by Mr. Harameo and Ms. Elsa V. Hill and, and Ms. Paula Santezdeva. And let's get a go for it, let's try. So a lot of hard work went into the process. I want to take this time just to thank that group. It was, it was a little bit rough, I'll be honest with you. But a lot of hard work went into that. And ultimately, on December 1st, we had an exit conference. So the audit was submitted on time. On January 31st, 2023, the document was released. And it's housed at www-osanm.org. That's the state auditor's website. We also have printed versions that we've, that we've provided to the county. There's also a federal reporting requirement because we performed a single audit. That was fulfilled on time. On February 27th, the federal audit clearinghouse wrote back to the county and our firm that it was accepted. Okay, so the deliverable I have for federal and state purposes is that the audit, it was on time and was compliant with all the, with all the regulatory deadlines. Okay, so that's a good thing. Couple of financial highlights. Here's a bar graph for revenue and expenses. Now, this is on a government-wide basis of accounting. So we talked a lot about the effects of the participation in, in the, in para, you know, in the para retirement plan, also the retiree healthcare plan. The implementation of GASB 68 and 75 impacted all local government reporting entities in the state of New Mexico. And so just keep in mind that, you know, a lot of these figures have those changes. So, you know, you keep your books for the most part on a cash basis, but modified accrual and full accrual look a little bit different. General fund maintained a healthy fund balance as of, as of June 30th, if you took a snapshot. So you had some unspent, you know, proceeds there from grants and stuff like that. So, you know, again, a lot of financial details were discussed during our exit. So I just left these kind of, these graphs in there. Let's see here. Am I supposed to do this right? Okay. A couple of other highlights. Total debt decreased a little over half a million. So you chipped away at principal payments as compared to what new debt that came, came onboard the books. Business-type business-type activities. Sorry, we're going back here. Business-type activities, solid waste and ambulance that, let's see here, sorry. Wait till you get back there. It was on the other highlights. There we go. Operating loss of 667 compared to 787 in the prior year. Now, this doesn't take into account any depreciation and that kind of thing. And then pension and OPEB, those are the participation in para and retiree healthcare. Again, $11.9 million decrease. So that plan is audited separate. Those numbers, you know, us, we don't audit. That's kind of disseminated down to all participants within the plan. So those are a few other highlights. At the exit conference, we, it was about an hour and a half meeting. We went over a lot of detail. This is just a recap. The audit was conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, generally accepted government auditing standards. And the, the point there is that we, we performed the audit to obtain reasonable assurance. Our opinion is giving reasonable assurance, not absolute. We don't audit every transaction. We went over the scope and timing at the beginning and then at the exit conference. And again, timing, everything was on time, so that was good. All your county policies conform to generally accepted county principles. So if you looked at your county versus other counties in the state of New Mexico or other counties in the United States of America, they're comparable. With the exception of GASB 87, that has to do with Lisa County, and that was a big change. And the county didn't, didn't quite do the assessment this year. I think the plan is to address that this year. There are some estimates in your financials, so not everything's kind of hard. There's how long buildings are going to last, vehicles are going to last, equipment. And then that pension and OPEB participation, there's a lot of actuarial assumptions in there at the plan level. We did have difficulties. Typically, this is kind of, no, we didn't have difficulties. But here, it was important that we pointed this out. Again, just, you know, with the significant turnover, the challenges in the finance office. And, you know, so we talked about that, kind of what's your plan for FY '23, getting back the right people in the right place. You know, it's difficult to find people. We understand, I mean, our firm personally deals with this. You know, it's just, especially in the accounting and finance world, it's hard to find good folks. There were no disagreements, material misstatements. We weren't actually able to audit capital assets this year. Just again, it was, it was kind of choose, you know, let's make a decision. What are we going to do? And the decision was, hey, we're not going to do anything with capital assets this year. Let's go to FY '23. Capital assets are your buildings, equipment, vehicles and that kind of thing. And then also GASB 87, those leases I mentioned. It was just, hey, we don't have the time to get the audit done. So those were misstatements or, you know, we couldn't audit those, it was a scope limitation. And there were some past audit differences. The largest one had to do with overpayment voucher. That was a prepaid asset, but that adjustment was not made because it was deemed immaterial. Okay, and no significant exposures that we noted. We did have multiple opinions. So we had to qualify the opinion on certain financials within that 668-page document, the government and business-type activities because of the capital assets, right? There's a lot of large numbers, depreciation and all that. So we kind of listed here how it reads in your opinion. Okay, and that's, those were the multiple opinions and the effects on that. The single audit, we performed a federal single audit. And we did have one finding in, in the program, but it wasn't material enough to lead to a qualified opinion. So we rendered an unmodified or clean opinion on the administration of that program. Okay, that was the coronavirus relief funds during FY '22. It accounted for about 75% of the total federal dollars administered during FY '22. Okay. On pages 150, 157 to 167 of your financials is all the findings. Again, we talked a lot of detail about these. There are some repeats. There are some repeated findings. And so again, the corrective action plans, we don't audit, but it's important that you guys, as the governing body, you know, see to it that hopefully these are resolved over time. And due to the lack of resources, personnel, et cetera, you know, sometimes it's not an overnight deal, but you pick and choose and try to put your resources towards the things that are most important. So focus on the material weaknesses first. Again, we kind of talked a lot about that. And this slide here talks about the repeats. So there was a few repeat findings. So other discussion items, again, those, those, those participation in those plans do affect the financials significantly as it relates to, you know, someone looking at financials to lend you money and that kind of thing. So it's important to have a little bit of understanding, you know, how that, how that impacts, how the county's financials look. So we kind of went over that. There's other things that aren't necessarily findings, but stuff that we, you know, kind of see or bring up and discuss throughout really the entire year. So Brannell reached out, Paula, Elsa, hey, what about this? What about that? And so we discussed a little variety of things at the exit. These are just a few bullet points on some things. Again, that we talked during the audit process and throughout the year. So, you know, our, our stance is, hey, if there's findings, get them out there. Let's work on them. You know, if there's other things that we see, you know, you may disagree with some of them, but... So we try to kind of bring that value add as far as, here's some stuff to think about. All right. It's a risk-based approach. So again, we don't audit every transaction, every grant, every payroll. It's done on a statistical, non-statistical